All right, good afternoon, everyone. We are going to get started with today's November 5th, 2014, formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council. And we have busy agendas, we're going to get right to it. All right, we're going to start our meeting as we start all of our meetings with an invocation. Today's invocation by given, will be given by Pastor Ron Faust from the Sunny Slope Mennonite Church. Pastor Faust, are you here? If you can, please rise.
I invite you to bow your heads with me. It's Wednesday afternoon, God. It's Wednesday, and these good folks are facing over fifty pages of agenda and supporting documents. Just another ordinary Wednesday afternoon. And we are ordinary people, made from dust into which you breathed your spirit. We are ordinary, and yet you allow us to strive for the stars and lift us up to be a little lower than angels. We ask that you place us, God, under the guidance of your spirit on this Wednesday, that actions taken and directions pursued will make the attainment of peace and prosperity more possible for this city and all who live and love within it. We trust in the guidance of your spirit, that on this Wednesday and other ordinary days, if we pay attention to your spirit, toddlers playing in this city's dust today will have a bright future in years to come. So we thank you for inspiring the city council and staff to do extraordinary work on this Wednesday and many Wednesdays to come. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor very, very much. Our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilman Laura, led by Councilman Bill Gates.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Councilman DeCiccio. Councilwoman Gallego.
Here.
Councilman Gates.
Here.
Councilman Noakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor. Councilman Valenzuela. Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Waring.
Here.
Mayor Stanton.
Here.
Is someone on the...
Yeah. Any Valenzuela, any Valenzuela is attending by phone. Begin with...
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, do we have, uh...
And Councilwoman...
Councilwoman Pastor is not here, so we'll...
She just walked in right now.
Okay. Uh, Councilman, Vice Mayor Waring, did you have a chance to review the formal meeting minutes from October 1st, 2014?
I'm sorry, I did not.
He did not? He's an honest man, so we'll hold that off till, uh, our next meeting. Councilman Pastor, did you have a chance to review the formal meeting minutes from September 17th, 2014?
I did.
And do you move their approval?
Yes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We're, um, we're fortunate to have an interpreter here, Judy Holm. Can you please introduce yourself and see if anybody needs the services?
Buenas tardes, me llamo Judy, soy interpreta de español. Si alguien necesita el equipo, por favor venga conmigo o con el personal de la ciudad. Gracias.
Thank you much for being here. Next on the agenda is board and commission nominations. We have a motion on mayor's board and commission nominations except judicial selection advisory board.
Uh, move to approve mayor's boards and commission nominations with the exception of the judicial selection advisory board.
Before we do that, I apologize, my fault. Twenty-four hour paragraph.
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least twenty-four hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances number G-5954 through G-5959, S-41220 and S-41242 through S-41270, and resolutions numbered 21262 through 21265.
Now create the motion, I apologize, Vice Mayor.
Uh, move to approve mayor's boards and commission nominations with the exception of judicial selection advisory board.
Second. We have a motion, a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously to have a motion on the judicial selection advisory board nomination that came from the state bar of Arizona.
Move to approve mayor's boards and commission nominations of the judicial selection advisory board.
Second. We have a motion, we have a, uh, second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Uh, I'm opposed to that one, but the state insists with my policy relative to the registered lobbyists, but, uh, the nominee, I think it was Joe Canefield, who will be added to the, and it passes on an eight to one, seven to one, eight to one vote now. Do we have a motion on city council members' board and commission nominations?
Move to approve city council members' boards and commission nominations as revised.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Do we have members here to be sworn in? Okay. If you're here to be sworn in for your service on a board or commission, please come to my right, uh, your left, we will, uh, swear you in. We have a few swearing ins, but we'll do first to citizens who are serving on boards and commissions. Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution.
...of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
And laws of the state of Arizona.
And laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same...
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies...
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially...
And impartially.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of...
The office of...
According to the best of my abilities...
According to the best of my abilities.
To help me God.
To help me God.
You're official. Thank you for your service in advance. Chris, can we suspend the rules that Eric Jeffrey, Eric Jeffrey, right now too?
Can I please?
Along? Can we move him up? I think he has to go run, he has to go back and run the court, so I can just leave you on, okay, good. Okay. All right, thank you, thank everyone for, in advance, for your service on city boards and commissions. It is very, very important work. Next on the agenda is a suspension of, uh, the rules. Vice Mayor, can I get a suspension of the rules motion?
Um, motion to suspend the rules and change the order of business to permit, uh, the administering of the oath of office from municipal court judges Laura Lowry and Christopher McBride.
And may I also add that we...
We're going to include...
If we can then also move to the beginning of the agenda, fifty-two. Can we do that? It's new business, is that all right? Okay, so add fifty-two as well.
So can I tack it on to this motion?
Yeah.
Okay. And also, a move to suspend the rules to move up item fifty-two.
All in favor say, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Can I get a motion relative to municipal court judges Laura Lowry and Christopher, uh, McBride? And then, and then assuming it's successful, we will then issue the oath of office?
For our, for our municipal court judges. Uh, move to approve municipal court judges Laura Lowry and Christopher McBride.
We need a particular motion on that? Is that the right motion?
With regard, uh, motion with regard to item fifty-two and the appointment of the chief presi, acting chief presiding judge.
Okay, so...
Were we doing these separately?
Okay, so what we're going to do, the municipal court judges are good to go. I need us to, uh, go swear them in.
Correct.
Then we'll come back and do fifty-two.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Again, my mistake, I apologize. So, um, our two municipal court judges were already approved by this, uh, council, so I will swear those judges, uh, in, in this very important ceremony. Then, then right after that, we will take item fifty-two, which is the proposed appointment, uh, of our acting chief presiding, uh, judge. So I will now go to my right, your left, and swear in, um, and for, uh, our new, or excuse me, our reappointments of our municipal court judges. All right, please raise your right hand. Aye?
Aye.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution.
...of the United States...
Oh, she didn't mention it.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
And laws of the state of Arizona. That I will bear true faith... And allegiance to the same... And defend them against all enemies... Foreign and domestic... And that I will faithfully... And impartially... Discharge the duties... Of the office of...
I wear your shoes, I would.
According to the best of my ability... To help me God.
So we're continuing.
Official again. Congratulations. I think some people may want to vote against the salary, but vote for the person.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Okay.
We, no, we, we suspended the rules.
Now you need to do it, and...
Okay. You want, you want it separated?
Okay, uh, so we're, we're going to move on to item fifty-two in new business. First off, congratulations again to our outstanding municipal court judges. We have the best municipal court in the entire, uh, country, uh, led by our recently retired Judge Roxanne Songong, who's done an outstanding job, and, uh, we have the, the best judges to prove it. So congratulations on your reappointment. Now, because of the retirement of our chief presiding judge of Phoenix Municipal Court, uh, we have to appoint a acting chief presiding judge during the pendency of the decision of the city council about who we're going to appoint as our permanent. So now we'll take a motion on, uh, who should be the acting chief presiding, uh, judge. As a professional courtesy to some of my colleagues who, uh, wanted to bifurcate the vote, we're going to first vote on the person, and then secondly, secondarily vote on the salary. Councilman Williams, what would you like to do?
I, I would move to appoint Eric Jeffrey as acting chief presiding judge, commencing on November 6th, 2014, and remaining in effect until the selection process for a chief presiding judge has been completed.
Second. We have a motion and a second for, uh, Judge Eric Jeffrey to be the acting chief presiding judge of the Phoenix Municipal Court. We have a second. Any comments by members of this, uh, council before we, uh, vote? Uh, I'll just say that, uh, our municipal court ju, our municipal court system has been number one in the country for a variety of reasons, but innovation, and innovation in municipal court services has been at the top of the list. And with the help of Judge Songong and, um, Eric Jeffrey, we really have been very, very innovative in some of these domestic violence court, homeless court, and other innovative ideas that are yet to be, uh, come forward. But I appreciate your, the partnership in which you've acted with, uh, this city, uh, council, and I'll happily be supporting this, uh, motion. Any additional comments by members of this council? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. Now we're going to take a motion before, you know, swear in tomorrow, I guess, uh, at the office. That's all right, because I know you have to get back and run the court. But now we'll take a motion on setting the salary of the acting chief, uh, presiding judge. Councilman Williams, do you have a motion on the salary for our acting chief?
I move to set the, uh, acting chief presiding judge's salary at $177,200.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Any comments by members of this council on that motion?
Mayor?
Councilman DeCiccio, please.
Um, I appreciate everything our judges do, and I do believe that they're fantastic. It's just that the salary level just seems to be quite above, a bit above what you would consider to be normal for a salary of judges throughout the entire state. If you take a look at, and I respect the work that they do, and I know that they're fantastic, it just seems to be a little bit out of place when it comes to... If you look at the, um, Attorney General for the state of Arizona, that person makes about ninety thousand a year. Governors, ninety-five thousand a year. Chief Justice of the Arizona Supreme Court is a hundred and seven, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. And then a member of Congress is a hundred and seventy-four thousand a year. It just seems to be a bit out of step with, um, with the market is out there. So I'm going to be voting against the pay mayor.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Councilman DeCiccio. Any other comments by members of this council? Okay, I think we'll do a, a roll call, so, because people, some people may want to vote no on the item. So, uh, roll call. DeCiccio.
No.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton. Yeah, so that item passes on a seven to two vote. And so he wa, he thought he would have to wait to the end of the meeting to be sworn in, but he's here now. Do you want to be sworn in now and get it over with? Let's make it official. All right, let's go. He's not wearing black, but what the heck, let's do it. Please raise your right hand. Aye. Do solemnly swear? That I will support the Constitution... ...of the United States... And the Constitution and laws... ...of the state of Arizona. That I will bear true faith... And allegiance... To the same... And defend them against all enemies... Foreign and domestic... And I will faithfully... And impartially... Discharge the duties... Of the office of... According to the best of my ability... To help me God. You're official. Congratulations. All right, congratulations, Your Honor. Now we'll move back to regular order of the city council. Liquor license applications. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on liquor licenses?
Move to approve items, uh, two through eight and item ten.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second. We have three cards, all in favor of the, uh, motion, so there's no need, uh, to speak in those items. Any comments by this council? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Vice Mayor, next item?
Move to approve item nine.
Second. We have a motion, a second, on nine. Leonard Clark, did you have testimony to provide on the, uh, Phoenix Center for the Arts special event liquor license? Is that the right one? Come on down, as quick as possible, please. Up to two minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Leonard Clark. I just wanted to say I strongly support, uh, temporary liquor license for the Phoenix Center for the Arts. They do a lot of good work for our community. I was born in this city and have watched the city grow for the last fifty years. And, uh, they've been there to help us, uh, through these lean times when our arts, funding for the arts are decreasing, all of these other things. So-called conservatives saying we need less art and beauty in our culture, but I disagree, and I strongly support this temporary liquor license. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next item is a proposed, recommended disapproval liquor license item in District Seven, Central Groceries. Uh, Councilman Noakowski, what's your pleasure? This item eleven. And the applicant is here, and we do have a representative of the Phoenix Police Department wishing to testify opposed to the item. Do you want to hear a staff resignation?
Mayor, I, I'm not sure if the, um, applicant wants to continue or not. Can we hear from the applicant?
The applicant is pre, is the applicant here?
Mayor, members of the council, the applicant's representative is here, and they did submit a request for continuance for November 19th.
And Mayor, with that, I'd like to continue this item until November 19th.
We have a motion for continuance, we have a second? All right, a motion and a second, uh, till, till the 19th of November. Officer Fortune, thank you for being here, and hopefully you're able to make, uh, that meeting. Thank you very much for your, uh, for your time. All in favor of the continuance, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next item is item number twelve, Vice Mayor?
Move to approve item twelve.
Second. We have a motion on twelve, we have a second. Any comments of the council? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We have an old, uh, business item on liquor license applications. This also is item number thirteen in District Seven. Gus's New York Pizza, Councilman Noakowski, how would you like to proceed?
Mayor, after sitting down and meeting with the applicant, I'd like to approve this item.
We have a motion for approval of item number thirteen. We have a second. The applicant is here, not wishing to speak in light of the, uh, motion. Any comments by members of this council? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Uh, Vice Mayor, are we ready for an omnibus motion? Okay, go ahead, please.
Mayor, we have cards on items sixteen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-seven, thirty-six, and thirty-seven, and forty-one.
Now, hold it. Vice Mayor?
Uh, I move that items fourteen through fifty-one being ordinance number G-5954 through G-J, G-J-5957, S-41220, S-41242 through S-41270, and resolutions twenty-one, twenty-six-two through twenty-one, twenty-six-five be adopted, except items sixteen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-seven, thirty-three, thirty-six, thirty-seven, forty, forty-one, forty-four, forty-six, and fifty-one. And noting that items fourteen and thirty-eight are requested to be withdrawn. Items nineteen and twenty-four are requested to be continued to November twen, nineteenth, uh, 2014. And item thirty-five is as corrected. So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Is that a proper, uh, motion included both withdrawn and continued? Great. Good job. All right. Roll call. DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates. Yes. Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. Next item is item number sixteen, Vice Mayor?
Move to approve item sixteen.
Second. We have a motion and a second on item number, uh, sixteen. Mr. Reed Butler, would you want to provide testimony on item number sixteen in light of the, the motion to support it? We have a motion in favor of sixteen, we have a second. Uh, the one, the one card submitted did not wish to provide testimony. Any comments by this council? Roll call. DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, item passes unanimously. Next item is item number eighteen, Vice Mayor?
Move to approve item eighteen.
We have an, uh, motion in favor of eighteen, do we have a second? Mr. Pat Vint, did you wish to provide testimony on number eighteen, a dedication of right of way, uh, on Jefferson Street and on Camelback Road? Please. Up to, up to two minutes.
Yes, I am Pat Vint, and again, the address, eighty-three forty North Sixteenth Street. This has to do with dedicating parcels so the light rail could use it. Up in my neighborhood, twenty years ago or so, Development Services Department made a terrible mistake on purpose. Give away half of a street of Sixteenth Street, north of Northern, south of Butler Drive, because the Development Services Department didn't follow the grading and drainage and flooding control. They let a private builder north of Butler and Sixteenth Street put in four houses. They restricted the acres, five acres, to four point six parcels or houses. You can't build a sixth of a house, so they built four of them. The problem is, they didn't follow the grading and drainage plan, so the floodwater comes south down Sixteenth Street, washes out my driveway, washes out other properties down. So what does the city do? They waste about a hundred thousand dollars, put curbs, gutters right over the main water valves, water lines, everything. So now you have a deal here. Supposedly, the city of Phoenix owns this property. But really, who is the city of Phoenix? It's not you. It's the citizens that are not here. Look at all those empty seats. But they know better. They come down here, they'll be insulted. There'll be all kinds of problems. So you're going to have to do something. I don't know if they ever did all this process at the time, that they put those curbs and gutters in the middle of the street and then said they did not narrow the street. How stupid is that? No matter if a street's ten foot wide or fifty foot wide, when you narrow it down fifty percent, you're narrowing it. Thank you.
Appreciate your testimony very much, uh, Mr. Vint. All right, we have a motion in favor of eighteen, we have a second. Roll call. DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring. Mayor Stanton. Yes, passes unanimously. Item number, uh, twenty. Vice Mayor, can I get a motion on, uh, the portion? You know, we'll do a, I guess we'll do two motions on twenty.
We have actually a couple of motions on twenty. We have, uh, do you want to do twenty Y first? Councilman Gallego has a conflict.
Okay, let's do twenty Y first.
Uh, move to approve item twenty Y.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Councilman Gallego has a potential conflict and will not be participating in the, uh, item. Roll call. DeCiccio. Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams. Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, item passes unanimously. Next, Vice Mayor? You want to do all of twenty except for the ones? Okay, so what you have to do, we'll do twenty whole. Okay. So, uh, Pat, you have, you have testimony on item number twenty? Please come forward, and, and this is the, uh, payment ordinance, followed by Leonard Clark. And just to note that we're probably going to break up twenty. A portion of it will be done with one vote, and a portion will be done with another vote. But I know you wanted to testify in all of twenty, so I wanted you to go first.
Yes, I am Pat Vint again at eighty-three forty North Sixteenth Street in the city of Phoenix, Arizona. I challenge every one of you here today, even the city attorney, the city manager, every one of you council people, that you have no idea what four million... one of you council people, that you have no idea what four million...
Please.
Three million nine hundred ninety-one thousand dollars is gonna be spent for. It goes all through the alphabet and goes on up through A to C again. So you ask, I think it was Sal DeCiccio, if he'd read the minutes, or somebody, they didn't, but Laura Pastor comes through, said, "Yeah, I read them. They're okay." I challenge you, Laura. I bet you have no idea what's happening in all of these. You've never read them.
Oh, I do know what's happening, and...
You're telling me you did read them?
I did read them, yes.
You understand them. That's the big thing. You have any understanding.
Yes, I do understand. And the other dynamic is Mr. Waring held them back because there's a, an item in those notes or minutes that I need to say something on, so, thank you.
Yeah, I see that, but you almost came in late, too. You didn't come in time to hear the citizens' comments, 'cause you don't give a damn.
Mayor, can we go back on the subject?
Yeah, Mr. Vint, you have to stay on item twenty, which is the payment ordinance, so the testimony has to relate to that, please.
That's your problem. You're wasting four million dollars here. You don't have any idea, 'cause you didn't even read the minutes from last time. You had to get Laura to say she read them, and maybe she did. Hopefully, she did. But I challenge you. Did you read all of these? Do you understand every one of them? Exactly to the dollar where it's going, 'cause you're wasting citizens' money. You're not the, you're part of the city of Phoenix, but you're not it. The citizens are.
Mr. Vint, your testimony is appreciated. The next speaker will be Leonard Clark. You have up to two minutes to provide testimony on item number twenty, the proposed payment ordinance. Mr. Clark?
Hello, Mayor and council members. My name's Leonard Clark, and I was born right down the street at Good Samaritan Hospital. Lived here all my life, except for being away a few years in Colorado Springs, at Fort Carson in Europe, and I'm just here because I would like to strongly ask and support that you support a payment ordinance here to Arizona State University Water Environmental Technology Center for payment of annual membership for the National Science Foundation, because I like the fact that in this procurement, this proposed procurement, you have, this money is to go to conduct research for watershed monitoring, including turbidity, taste, and odor for the Water Services Department. There's been a lot of complaints about the water, not only of Phoenix, but in other parts of the valley. But as some people know, that have been around the world, most of the world doesn't have clean drinking water, and so I do believe that you're doing your best, but we have had poisonous plumes. To this day, we have wells that are closed, groundwater wells around the Phoenix Zoo, done by manufacturers, poisoning our children. So I think, and people, so I think it's a good idea that you support this payment procurement for clean water, because people don't remember that it is a crime against humanity. You can make some money in the short term by allowing manufacturers to come in and pollute our groundwater, but for many generations after, we are the ones, the parents, the loved ones, who have to support the children born with defects, congenital defects, and all of these other things, to pay for the short-term greed of the money now. So I hope that you do that, and also, the second item, B, on sewer lines. In my neighborhood, and I'm in a beautiful district, and it's run very well, thank you, by Councilman Thelda Williams, and I really appreciate that. I see every day the city workers out there doing a good job, police officers putting their lives on the line. But this sounds rather mundane, but we have some people complaining periodically now that their sewer lines are clogging up. And I'm just wondering, is it just our, the homeowners, because a lot of us know that some of the homes that were put in long before you were here, in the nineteen seventies and eighties, were not maybe the highest quality? So we're having problems with our sewer lines, and they're clogging, and we're being told that it's not us, I mean, that it is us and it's not the city. I hope that you'll check on that. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Vice Mayor, okay, so now we have testimony on item twenty. I know we're gonna have a few votes on twenty, so take a shot at the first motion.
Move to approve item twenty V.
We have a motion on twenty B, Ms. Bar...
V.
V, excuse me. Twenty V, Diane Barker, item twenty V, provide testimony, please.
Mayor and council, Diane Barker, and I put on for V and X, they are related. May I speak on them?
You have X as well, if you want to provide testimony on both, that would be very much appreciated.
Yes, sir. Yes, I would. And you know what? First of all, I want to thank people that I've asked for information out of the city, and they've readily done it. They've done their job, and they've done it well, and an example is Tammy Fisher, Director of the City Aviation Sky Harbor. In less than two minutes, she explained what these relocation monies were about, that it would sunset in twenty sixteen, and that it was part of an FAA program for noise pollution, and that how they helped people, they bought their property and they relocated them, and then in some cases even assisted them in finding a new home. It sounds good. It sounds like the city's gonna be out of this. Great. We're trying to get leaner, and best practices, and kudos for this, and I'm in support of these items.
Thank you very much. Lost her, Vice Mayor, so we had a motion on twenty V. Can we go ahead and add X to that as well, Vice Mayor?
And actually, Mayor, can I say something on those items as well?
You may, of course. Councilman, please.
Those items, and there's also another item, item T, which is seven hundred, about three-quarters of a million dollars for maintaining vacant lands. So this has been an area of priority and interest for me, because I represent most of this area, and would love to see these vacant lands move forward into productive use, 'cause we do hear from the neighbors a lot that they don't want to live next door to an empty lot. And so we are moving forward with a process to begin selecting a consultant and having a very robust process with the neighborhood to talk about what they want to see happen in their community, and then moving forward to make sure we get those lands back into a more productive use. So we are spending a lot of money on this program, but I am hopeful that we will not have to have this item again, so appreciate also Tammy working with us on this one. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman. So the motion is twenty V and X. We have a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Next item, Vice Mayor?
I'm gonna move a few from twenty and then a few other ones.
Please.
That a couple of us agree on. So, actually, you know what? I'm not gonna move, if you wouldn't mind moving.
Councilman Williams.
I thought we were gonna do everything, all the ones except for the ones that maybe have separates.
It seemed like it would be easier to take out the ones that we don't want and then just move the rest of twenty. Is that...
Move for approval, twenty A, twenty R, twenty S. That doesn't correspond with this list. About Q.
It does. The rest of them are down here in a different motion.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, if you could just move these.
Twenty-seven, thirty-three, thirty-seven, and forty-four.
Okay, so we have a motion. I hate to do this. Could you repeat the motion?
Twenty A, twenty R, twenty S, twenty-seven, thirty-three, thirty-seven, and forty-four for approval.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. Questions by members of this council. We have no cards on these items. Roll call.
DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so those items pass on an eight to one vote. Next item is, Councilman Williams, please.
I would move approval of twenty K, twenty Q, twenty-three, and forty-one.
Okay, so, once, one more time, Councilman, please, just so the city clerk gets it down.
Pardon me? I don't know. He just took my paper.
Okay. So, Councilman, one more time?
I have to wait for the paper.
Could you, yeah.
Okay. Approval of twenty K, twenty Q, twenty-three. And leave forty-one as is? Okay.
Okay. Councilman Gates?
Yeah. I may vote differently on different ones there.
Do you want to just pull out?
Yeah, so if you can pull out twenty-three.
Okay, so hold out twenty-three, so just do the items within twenty. Correct.
So I was right and you were wrong.
Yes.
All right, I just wanted them to hear. Yeah, okay, all right, good.
Well, I need to go back and change that, and...
We should just do them individually.
Do you want me to just do them individually?
Let's do it. Yeah, we'll whip through them quickly. Okay.
Move twenty K.
Motion and second on twenty K. Roll call.
DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring. Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so item passes seven to two. Next item, Councilman Williams?
Move approval of twenty Q.
We have a motion on twenty Q. Do we have a second? We have a second on twenty Q, membership in the Water Environmental Research Foundation.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes seven to two. Next item?
Move approval of item twenty-three.
Now, so we're done with twenty? Have we got the rest of those? So I think we have all of the rest of the items on twenty that were not pulled out. So, so is it...
Oh.
So, Vice Mayor, can we make a motion on the rest of twenty, and then we'll go to twenty-three?
Move approval of the rest of item twenty that we haven't voted on already.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the remainder of twenty items that we didn't individually pull out. Roll call.
DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Oh, yeah. Yes, I'll vote for it, yes. Sorry.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Next item is item twenty-three, and so, do we have a motion on twenty-three, Councilman Williams?
Move approval.
We have a motion on twenty-three. We have a second. Any comments, members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
No.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Williams.
No.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. I think it passed on a five-four vote. Okay, next item, Vice Mayor. Is it twenty-seven? No, I think that's Councilman, so item twenty-seven. This is amend the license with Valley Metro Rail for construction staging light rail northwest extension. I don't think we did twenty-seven, but are we...
No, it was accepted.
We have a motion on twenty-seven?
Oh.
Do we already vote on twenty-seven? Okay, so we did vote on twenty-seven. Pat Vint, I apologize. Did you have testimony on item twenty-seven? This is the mending the license with Valley Metro Rail for staging, construction staging for light rail northwest extension. Up to two minutes, please.
Yes, I am Pat Vint again of eighty-three forty North Sixteenth Street. You talk about disasters. This disaster's been happening for years over there on Nineteenth Avenue, running the light rail north. They've... They've destroyed many businesses over there, and now you're just getting around to approve some of the stuff that they're doing. If you're really in business, you figure out things before you do it, not after you have a disaster. Everything about this, sixty-eight ten North Nineteenth Avenue Assessor's parcel number, nineteen oh nine West Clendale, they've been destroying this for a couple of years, at least now, and you're just now getting around to approve if they can do it or not? That's how the city operates, especially the Neighborhood Services Department, Development Services Department. They have no idea what they're doing, and they don't care that they destroy private citizens, private business. It's a disaster. So the word disaster comes up a lot, 'cause the city of Phoenix is a dip city, disaster in progress. Time and time and time again, this stuff comes up, and then you postpone it again, and you do something different. Way back when, when I developed my property on Northern Avenue from thirteenth to fourteenth Street, I had to have it all designed and done before we started a project. And then we got a project going along, comes a fire department. They said, "Wait, stop. You don't have a fire hydrant close to your property." Right across the street, there's a big yellow fire hydrant. "Oh, damn, we didn't see that." That cost me probably a thousand dollars, maybe two thousand dollars, maybe more, on the holdup of building my property, strip shopping center, but you don't give a damn. Most of you are just here getting paid, waiting to retire, spike your pension, because it's proof beyond a doubt, there's nobody worse than Frank Fairbanks, David Cavazos, and Ed, you're trying to do a job, but you should condemn this stuff. It's your job. You're getting paid over three hundred thousand dollars a year. Talk to a detective, that's my private detective. He can't believe that David Cavazos and Frank Fairbanks were getting three hundred thousand a year. They walked off, spiked their pension a couple hundred thou...
Thank you very much, Mr. Vint.
Wait, one second.
Appreciate your testimony.
And then, now they're getting a quarter of a million dollars each in retirement.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Vint.
Six.
All right, so we now have a motion and a second on item number twenty-seven. Oh, I think we already, oh, sorry, we already voted on twenty-seven. Does anyone change their position based upon Mr. Vint's testimony? Okay, we'll move on with the agenda. Vice Mayor? We have a motion and a second on item number thirty-six. Leonard Clark, do you have testimony on item number thirty-six? This is a joint agreement with RPTA for the manufacturing and delivery of heavy-duty transit buses, please.
Thank you so much, Mayor and council members, and I feel guilty because I forgot to thank the folks out there who give me a right to speak right now in the armed forces. I wouldn't be here right now speaking to you if it wasn't for them, so anyways. I am asking that you table it. I've been speaking with another activist, Ms. Barker, and she's concerned about, and not because you're doing anything purposely, but she's concerned about the costs, I guess, the request for proposals. She's saying that it would be more prudent to review these RFPs, or the RFP, and to make sure that the spending is in line with what is supposed to be taking place on this, so thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. Ms. Barker, do you want to provide testimony on this item?
Yes, I do, Mayor, and Diane Barker, District Seven. I'm a proponent for mass transit, and of course, we need buses, and we need clean buses, and I think that it's important to that we maintain buses, and that just because the federal government, they used to pay ninety, ninety-five percent, now it's down to eighty-five percent they're paying, and the state, you know, Regional Area Road Fund is, that the city still needs to be cautious about the way that we're going about paying for these buses. Therefore, when I was at MAG, I went up to transit, and I asked to read the RFP. Typically, I can do it, sitting down, within a half an hour. They didn't have it ready. They made me put a public request, and they said they tried to get the information. I would like to see that you would consider tabling this. My concerns basically are the prices of buses has like, you know, more than doubled, you know, in the last, you know, eight years, and here they want to buy sixty-foot buses for eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars C and G. This first year, we're going to spend forty-one million with, you know, eighty buses. And we're doing this with RPTA. I want to see, you know, what part the city's responsible for, and RPTA, and also looking to see the way that we use the Prop 400 money. Are we using it the best way that we can, because I think that Prop 400 will also pay for bus operations where they won't for light rail, and so I'd like to see us look at this RFP again, please.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barker, for that testimony. Okay, so we have a motion on item thirty-six. We have a second. Councilman Noakowski, please.
Do we happen to have that breakdown that she was describing right now?
City manager?
Mayor, we have Ms. Hyatt and Mr. Sapien from Public Transit who can discuss this purchase. I would note that this is actually a first for us. We collaborated with the RPTA on the procurement, which is an important regional cooperative effort. Ms. Hyatt?
Mayor, members of the council, I'm gonna introduce Jesus Sapien, who's been our lead on this project. Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you for having us here. As Mr. Zirker correctly points out, this is a long-term joint effort with Valley Metro RPTA that city staff has undertaken for the past two years, approximately. In January two thousand thirteen, we presented to the city council a bus and fuel procurement strategy, which was approved, and what that outlines is what percentage of our fleet is natural gas-powered, and how we can take advantage of joint procurements in the region to get the best bang for our buck, basically. And so what we are doing under this procurement, it is a five-year procurement to replace any buses that have met or exceeded their lifespan. Right now, we have approximately forty percent of our fleet that meets or exceeds that, so we are very eager to get going on this procurement, and this same item will be presented to the Valley Metro RPTA board this month as well. We had a significant number of qualified staff from both organizations. Look at this, from a technical aspect, from a financial aspect, and this is a very positive thing for the city, and we would like to move forward. Mayor and council, Ms. Barker brought up the cost of the buses, and yes, they are expensive, but we do get at least thirteen years out of each one of these buses, and more than six hundred thousand miles, so these are workhorses that are used to run millions of miles during these time periods, and what we're looking for is to make sure that we meet the Federal Transit Administration's State of Good Repair, which means that we do keep our equipment...
which means that we do keep our equipment in good repair and also replace it as necessary. Prior to last year, the Public Transit Department had not purchased buses for more than five years. And so that is why we are, forty percent of our fleet exceeds its life cycle right now.
Additional questions? Any other comments by members of this council? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Williams. Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item passes unanimously. Next item, Vice Mayor.
Move to approve item forty.
We have a motion on forty, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
To declare a potential conflict?
Councilwoman Gallego has a potential conflict, would not be participating. Any cards on this item? Roll call.
DeCiccio. Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Williams. Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, next item, Vice Mayor. We have a motion on forty-one, do we have a second? We have a motion, do we have a second? This is the Twenty-seventh Avenue Transfer Station Complex Composting Engineering Services Facility Engineering Services.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Pat Vin, do you want to provide testimony on item number forty-one? Please, up to two minutes. You're taking a pass on it? All right, no problem. So Mr. Vin is passing up his opportunity to speak. We have no other cards. Do we have comments by members of this council relative to item forty-one? Councilwoman Gallego, please.
Just have a few questions for staff?
Please.
Could you tell us how we are doing towards our forty percent by twenty-twenty goal?
Mayor, member of the council, Councilwoman Gallego. Our current diversion rate from our transfer stations are at about sixteen percent at this time.
And we have a waste characterization study in process. What are the results of that? Is it anything we can share?
Members of the council, we just completed the preliminary process for the waste characterization study for the first phase of it. And we have several things that have come out of that. And currently, as it relates to this project, about approximately fifty percent of the residential waste that we are disposing at the landfill is compostable-type material. The other fourteen percent is recyclable material that could be put into the blue container as well.
Excellent, thank you. We just completed a waste characterization study at SRP and have made a bunch of changes to the facilities to make recycling and composting more available. And we no longer have trash cans at our desks so that we have to think about what goes in recycling. And almost everything can go somewhere besides trash. So it's been a good exercise for us as a result of that waste characterization study.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Councilman Gates, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Question for staff. What exactly is the council being asked to approve on this item?
Mayor, members of the council, item forty-one requests council approval to enter an agreement, our contract for engineering services with Arrington Watkins to begin preliminary design of a composting facility at the Twenty-seventh Avenue Transfer Station. The cost that we're asking for is not to exceed a Phase One, it is five hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and two dollars.
So you'll have to come back before the council, to get a, to have another vote to actually approve the construction of the facility?
Mayor, members of the council, we're going to have to come back to council two more times. One more time to get approval to start the final design of the composting facility as well as construction of the composting facility as well.
And Mayor, Councilman Gates, just to add, in the council-adopted capital improvement program, the entire budget for the full project is in that budget for this year and next year. And Mayor, so right now, the materials that are going in the new third can, for those people who are participating in it, what's happening with that material right now, you know, since we don't have a composting facility built at this time?
Currently, council did approve the purchase of the chip and grind equipment as well as approved a contract with a company to do just chip and grind at this time. They are taking it off-site and either creating composting or selling the product elsewhere, doing something else with it.
And can you just explain to us, if the city were to go ahead and construct this facility, what's the advantage of that over the current, like you said, the chip and grind by this outside group?
Mayors and members of the council, with the current program, we are not allowed to add food waste to the current system. And with our waste characterization study, that's about thirteen and a half percent of what's being thrown away into the residential curbside program. As well as, we are in discussions with partnerships with other businesses, as well as other cities, that would like to use our composting system if we are allowed for food waste into the system, if approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Gates. Other comments, questions by members of this council? We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams. Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item passes seven to two. Next item, Vice Mayor.
Move approval, item forty-six.
We have a motion and a second on item number forty-six. Councilwoman Gallego, do you have comments on item number forty-six? A retroactive approval to apply for and accept FCDMC's Small Project Grant Assistant Program funding.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate staff working very much to identify funding opportunities, to deal with some of the flood control issues we have in the South Mountain and Levine area. And so this was going forward in partnership with the county to try to address some of the smaller projects in the area. So we just want to reiterate for folks who are still out of their homes because of the flooding that we are working very hard to find good opportunities for you. There's also in the council packet, information about charitable resources because we're hearing from folks who say, all I was offered was twenty-five dollars at Goodwill and I just don't see how I'm able to get it back in my house, what's out there. So we are looking both long-term to keep people safe, which is what this represents, as well as short-term to help people get the resources they need to get back in their homes. And thankful to everyone who's looking creatively in these lean budget times to find solutions.
Any additional comments? Councilwoman Nowakowski, do you have additional comments?
Yes, Mayor, I just really want to thank councilmember Gallegos for all her hard work and advocating for those victims of the flood and really making sure that they're taken care of and especially the ones in Levine and District Seven also. So thank you for your hard work.
Any additional comments by members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Item passes unanimously. Next item, Vice Mayor.
Move approval, item fifty-one.
Second.
We have a motion on fifty-one. We have a second on fifty-one. This is the proposed downtown funding for the Downtown Enhanced Municipal Services District, also known as Downtown Phoenix Partnership. Councilwoman Gallego, do you have comments?
I do, I have the privilege of representing the city of Phoenix in conjunction with many other individuals in this room on this. And we are moving forward in response to a lot of the comments that the city has gotten. One, that they really like the momentum in downtown but want more signature events that will bring people to. And so this, if successful, will represent more progress in that area. And then it will also respond to the many comments we've gotten about a more walkable urban downtown with more streetscape. So just wanted to let folks know that we appreciate their involvement and we are responding to their comments from different projects, including the Downtown Code Process, as well as My Plan Phoenix, where one of the top five themes was investment in a strong downtown. So thank you all for your support of this item.
Any other comments by members of the council? Roll call.
DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams. Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item passes unanimously. Next item, Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I'd like to have us reconsider item nine.
We have a motion reconsideration on item number nine, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Item number nine, I think Councilwoman Valenzuela was on the phone and didn't realize that the item was in, so needed to declare a conflict. So can we get a motion on item number nine?
Move to approve item nine.
We have a second?
I will declare a conflict, Mayor.
Councilman Valenzuela has declared a conflict, would not be participating. Do we have a second on item number nine?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes eight to zero, noting Councilwoman Valenzuela's potential conflict. Next item, Vice Mayor.
Moving into new business, so are you ready for Chris? Move approval items fifty-four, fifty-seven, and fifty-eight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments by this council? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next item, Vice Mayor.
Move approval, item fifty-three.
Okay, we have motion fifty-three, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is a memorandum of understanding with the Greater Phoenix Chamber of Commerce. Can I give you just a short, this is a pretty exciting item. Paul Blue, I don't know if you want to come forward and kind of explain to the public, most importantly, what are we doing with the Greater Phoenix Chamber of Commerce on this item?
Mayor, members of the council, Paul Blue with the City Manager's Office. Economic development is a team sport and we have had longtime relationships with a variety of economic development agencies throughout the state. But it's become clear that it's important to more formalize the activities we conduct with each other so we each can understand, particularly in the business retention expansion area, the place where the most amount of jobs gets created in Phoenix, that we share that work with others. It includes the Phoenix Chamber of Commerce among other outside agencies. And so this item is, if the council approves it, will help ratify our working relationship with the Phoenix Chamber. It talks about us sharing information that we are working collaboratively with the private sector to deliver services to the business community in a seamless fashion. So we're not independently going out and seeing the same business twice in the same week. So we're going to work hand in glove with our partners in the private sector to help the economy grow in Phoenix.
Thank you very much. Leonard Clark had some comments and then I know Councilman Gates has some additional comments and maybe other members of the council. Leonard, Mr. Clark, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Leonard Clark. Thank you for letting me speak today. I do support this proposal that you're doing with the Phoenix, Greater Phoenix Chamber of Commerce. I would just ask that, I have some questions. I know you'll pass it because it's kind of late now. But maybe you guys could just keep an eye out. I mean, after what happened with Apple and the city of Mesa, I don't know who was involved with it. I mean, it sounded like the city of Mesa, as a municipality, or maybe the state helped to bring in Apple. But it looks like Apple is making amends. It was some kind of company below them. But I'm just saying, when you're dealing with the Greater Chamber of Phoenix of Commerce, this thing, and it's a good organization to get our economy, help our economy here in Phoenix, that you safeguard against getting everybody's hopes up, like when a huge company like Apple. I mean, by all means, if you can get Apple here, that's great. Google all of the rest of them, I think that's great. And I know that you guys have had commissions also for citizens like myself, proposals to the councilmember, Mr. DeCiccio, and all of the rest of you, trying to bring in businesses and cut some of the red tape. I'm hoping that this agreement with these folks, when you go and do your business outreach, that you do go for Phoenix people as local as you can because I know we're supposed to be in this so-called global economy where we have to compete with sweatshops and all of that. I think that's a bunch of baloney and maybe you guys can change some of that in the future. But please try to ask the Greater Chamber of Phoenix of Commerce, the business organization, to please try to get businesses from around here. Try not to bring in some manufacturing company from communist red China or these other countries who don't respect workers' rights. Try to keep, to get people here. And so the bankers, all of the people in the financial industry making money off of paper, when there's a man with a strong back and arms and two hands willing to do the work like Mr. Walmart, Mr. Sam Walton said, that you'll help that person here in Arizona make their business stronger. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Councilman Gates, you had some comments on this proposed MOU.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Actually, I think Mr. Clark's comments were right on track with what this proposal is, which is really putting our focus on those companies that are here now. That's our most likely opportunity for job growth and new opportunities. And it's a wonderful opportunity to expand the bandwidth of community and economic development in the city of Phoenix, is to utilize the resources of Greater Phoenix Chamber. So I want to thank Todd Sanders and the whole team at the Chamber for the great work they're doing and another wonderful collaboration. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council. Any other comments by members of the council? Councilman DeCiccio, please, and then Councilman...
No, I think it's a fantastic idea to do this and go out there, basically going door-to-door with some of the businesses. When you come in my district, I'd like you to invite us to come along. We've had a policy, actually, we've had a plan in place. And I think some of the elders knows it. We've been going door-to-door to exclusively small business owners, knocking on their doors, meeting with the owners, talking to them, and asking if there's anything we can do. Generally, you don't get much of that, but you do because they've got their own businesses they're trying to run. But it lets them know that there's somebody out there watching and caring. We give them an information package. One of the other things you can do too is that small business model that the mayor worked on and others up here worked on, getting them these contracts. We help them get set up on that. We give them the sheet so that they can sign up and they can bid on products coming to the city of Phoenix. So I would really encourage that. So if and when you do come into my district, work with us. In the southern part, we've already been working with the Awatuki Chamber. They actually go door-to-door with us as we go knocking on those doors. In the north, we didn't have anyone we were talking to that had something like that. So it's been phenomenal. As all I can tell you is that door-to-door, that personal contact is off the charts when you sit down and you talk to a business owner and tell them how important they are to our community, especially the small business owner that doesn't get a whole lot of attention from most anybody. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilman Gallego?
Thank you, this is very exciting. It's definitely easier to grow businesses than to get them to locate from elsewhere. And so this is very positive. I echo Councilman DeCiccio's comments, would love to be involved when it's in my neck of the woods. And also, we have other partners who are involved with this, the Commerce Authority, GPEC, and others will be all coordinating because they are also doing research on our existing businesses and expansion opportunities.
Mayor, Councilwoman Gallego, you're going to see, I hope, based on my interactions with the Arizona Commerce Authority, that you will see a companion item to this come to the council in the near future, addressing the same kind of relationship that we're discussing with the Phoenix Chamber. So there's a coordination of all of the people who are out interacting with businesses on behalf of government so that we're all making, we're sharing information and we're not confusing the business or wasting their time.
Fabulous, thank you.
Any other comments by members of this council? All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations. Great program. Next item, Vice Mayor.
Move to approve items fifty-five.
We have a motion on fifty-five, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilman Nowakowski, have you comments on implementation of Parklet program?
You know, Mayor, I really want to thank the staff for thinking outside the box. About three or four years ago, we came to the city manager and the assistant city manager at that time and we asked them about maybe creating First Street as a pedestrian mall. So we went out to the community, we listened, we couldn't find the funding and there was some concerns about closing down First Street. But thinking outside that box, we created a more pedestrian, more friendly, more bike-friendly also atmosphere using paint and using flower pots and planting trees. And it's just amazing. And then the whole concept of the Parklets came out. And I just really want to thank Ernie from Matt's Big Breakfast for allowing us to use her location as a pilot program. And it's working out great where people can actually sit outside these restaurants and enjoy the weather. And at the same time, it just invites people to participate. So I really want to thank once again our staff for really taking in concern, listening to the community and making this all happen.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Additional comments by members of this council? Councilman DeCiccio, please.
And I do remember when Councilman Nowakowski wanted to really get this whole thing started and it really took off too. I wanted to make sure that we acknowledge Councilwoman Pastor for what she's doing on Grand Avenue, Councilwoman Gallego and what she's doing as well in her district because a great part of that's in her district. And I know Councilman Valenzuela from the subcommittee had heard this. They did a fantastic job on this, just helping design it and put it together. Staff did a great job. I think what we're going to find too is that, and from my end, I really want to encourage the private end of it because it allows people to be able to move in and out rather than the public in. And I think they came up with a really good fix on that that also allows some income to come to the city, but also allows for that excitement to occur when you've got people sitting outside, eating breakfast, eating lunch. So I do want to give special thanks to Councilman Nowakowski for getting this thing started and then for the others up here too that really got this thing kicked off. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Additional comments? Councilman Gallego, please.
Further, I agree with my earlier comments about the Downtown Phoenix Partnership item. This is, again, further getting that urban environment with active streets where people feel safe being out there because they see their friends and neighbors out, eating, drinking, enjoying the great outdoors. So, further investment in our downtown and an exciting step forward, and I think we'll be looking at the state level to see if there are licensing changes that might make even more of these uses available. So, thanks, staff, for working us on that item to make this even more beneficial.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations. Next item is item number fifty-six. Is that correct?
Move of approval, item fifty-six. Councilman Gates has a conflict.
You have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second noting Councilman Gates' potential conflict. He will not be participating in the item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We're done with our regular agenda for this meeting. We'll now move on to the planning and zoning agenda, starting with item number fifty-nine. I'm going to hand the chairmanship of the meeting over to the Vice Mayor, but I'll be on the... I'll be on the phone for the remainder of the meeting. I just have a meeting I have to run to. Thank you. All right. We're now going to open the public hearing on item fifty-nine. This first part, this is where we take testimony. I have one, two, three cards in favor and one, two, three, four, five cards opposed. Okay? We will start with... Are we going to have a... Okay, why don't we start with a staff presentation and then move on from there?
Vice Mayor, members of council, this is a request to modify stipulation number one regarding general conformance of the site plan dated April twenty-seventh, two thousand and seven, and the elevations date stamped March twelfth, two thousand and seven, and delete stipulation five regarding the maximum allowable number of units. This two-point-six-two acre site is located on the southwest corner of Twenty-Fifth Street and Campbell Avenue. The Camelback East Village Planning Committee originally denied the request on August fifth, but later recommended approval with modifications and additional stipulation on October seventh by a vote of sixteen to zero after the applicant revised their site plan elevations. The planning hearing officer did initially deny the request as well, but it was approved by the Planning Commission, again, once after the applicant revised the site plan elevations. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Alan? Okay. We will start with the applicant. Wendy, are you... You want to kick it off?
Thank you. Vice Mayor, members of the council, for your records, Wendy Riddell with the law firm, Barry Riddell and Rosenstiel. It's my pleasure to be here this afternoon on behalf of Landmark. Just by way of a little bit of quick background, this is a two-and-a-half acre site roughly at the southwest corner of Twenty-Fifth and Campbell. It was actually originally zoned back in two thousand and seven, and it was rezoned to R-four-A, and it was stipulated that there'd be a maximum of thirty-six units. At the time, the marketplace supported much larger, three-thousand-plus square foot units. So, fast forward to today, my clients initially filed an application to delete that stipulation and actually to increase the number of units to sixty-five, and frankly, it got off to a pretty rocky start. We were denied by the Camelback East Village and ultimately by the PHO, and we took that time to go back and to talk to all of the adjacent neighbors and the interested stakeholders. We talked with everyone, frankly, that had filed a card. We tried to reach out with them, and we made some substantial modifications to our application. We reduced the density by nearly thirty percent down to a maximum of forty-six units. We eliminated the tandem garages that had been an issue. We internalized all of the rooftop decks. We increased the open space, and we increased the setbacks. So, pretty substantial modifications to the application. We then voluntarily went back actually to the Camelback East Village and received a unanimous recommendation of approval. We have letters of support from Mr. Barnes and cards filed in support from Mr. Hawkins as well as from even Jeff Fine. We then actually, again, continuing to dialogue with the neighbors, but went to Planning Commission where we received approval. Even as late as last night and this morning, we were continuing to talk to a few of the residents in the area that have concerns and trying to work out some of their design considerations that they have. So, that being said, we respectfully request approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions? Nope, seeing none. Thank you very much. Maybe we'll switch over to someone who's opposed, Teresa Polito.
Mayor, members of the council, Teresa Polito, twenty-five, thirty-nine, East Campbell. I am opposed to this project. A little bit of further background. This project in two thousand and seven was rezoned from R-three to R-four-A. The potential exposure at that point going up to the zoning category was a hundred and fourteen units. In order to protect the vulnerabilities of the neighborhood, there was a stipulation put in place to maximize only thirty-six units. With those assurances and those promises, the neighbors, in agreement with that project, decided to put our faith and our trust into the city based on those stipulations and assurances and allow the R-four-A zoning because we love that project. The project was never completed. Fast forward seven years, those stipulations are still in place. This particular developer came in originally with sixty-five units, almost double the stipulation. They were denied at the various places that we've mentioned. However, in coming down to the forty-six units, despite their assurances that they spoke to the neighborhood, we feel that was in order to make their project more financially feasible and viable because they continued to get denied by the city. The day that the denial came out, they called Jasper Hawkins and Paul Barnes to a meeting. I asked to come along. I was told that I could not come or bring any neighbors. I waited a week for a phone call, didn't get a call. Called them in order to infuse ourselves in the process. These issues of transparency, Mr. Barnes and Mr. Hawkins have a wealth of information. Originally, they told us as the neighbors that they were going to work with us and guide us through the process. All of a sudden, when it comes down to forty-six, they're in support. We have never asked them to be representatives of our neighborhood. They told us they would work with us. We put that faith in the project. Let me point out something. Between Twentieth and Twenty-Eighth Street, there are four schools represented totaling four thousand students. Camelback High School has a population of two thousand students. Eleven hundred have bus passes. This is a high pedestrian walkway, Campbell Avenue. As far as the concept of the community wheel, I've talked to schools, I have. They want me to come out to their site-based team. This project does not take into account the high volume of pedestrian traffic, the high volume of residential area that we have. We feel that approving this project is going to send a message to neighborhoods across the city that when the city gives you a stipulation and assurances that you will be protected, and it's easily changed because the marketplace does not dictate. The marketplace should not dictate the assurances provided to members of the neighborhoods at all. At a minimum, we asked to speak for a continuance because those that they've been speaking to originally did not represent us at all. We would like to have a meaningful dialogue. We were able to secure an architect to look at these plans as a... Who lives close by to our neighborhood, and he has serious concerns when we bring up the high volume of pedestrian traffic, how Campbell in this area is a major ulterior street. They want to narrow the sidewalk in this area to accommodate. You know, there's a lot of potential for tragedy for this. Kids don't tend to walk on the sidewalk when it's nor... They're going to spill over to Camel... To Campbell.
Sorry, if you could wrap it up. We're getting close to time. Thank you.
We feel that approval of this project would send a message to the residents of Phoenix that the use of stipulations to protect neighborhoods and the assurances these stipulations represent are easily forgotten and ignored by city officials, to the detriment of the neighbors, to the benefit of the developers. We are not against development, but we want to be taken into account that this is a high resident. Madison School District has ten bus stops between Twenty-Fourth and Twenty-Eighth Street. Can I say more? There's tons of kids in our neighborhood. This is a project that is not the right fit. We are not the Camelback Corridor. We're close to it, so maybe it's being opportunistic to put this there, but we are a... We have three churches on this street. We have Saint Thomas the Apostle. Many of you know it. We have a Catholic community there.
We're... I'm sorry, we're over time.
Okay.
I appreciate it, though. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, just a quick... If I could, Teresa, just ask a couple of questions. When we talked last week, and you started meeting with the developer, I think maybe three times now since Friday, my understanding was you just had some concerns, but not your... It's okay to be opposed to the project, but my understanding was you wanted to have some concerns, and my... And I have like six additional stipulations to add on that addressed every one of those concerns. Is it... If you're opposed, that's okay, but that's what I was trying to get at you. But if you're opposed, that's one thing, but did these stipulations address all the concerns that you'd laid out?
Councilman DeCic...
Except for the project itself, then? Because I'm hearing something a little differently now.
Thank you for the opportunity to respond to that. I'd like to say that the developer will tell you that they've worked with the community. I had to infuse myself into the process. They did not reach out. I'm guessing their strategy was since you get Paul Barnes's approval, it sends the message that the neighborhood's in place, but he is not our representative. Yes, we've met with them because we had to force ourselves, most recently Monday, because the meeting was Wednesday. It's not meaningful dialogue. The things that we mentioned were the beginning of a conversation, but it hasn't ended. At a minimum, we would like to have a continuance so that we can continue to work with the developers so they have an incentive to include the neighborhood concerns. Yes, there was some things that we mentioned, but when we had the real hard issues and we talked about how many kids were there, how they were going to, you know, take care of certain issues, they decided to leave the meeting. So, I would like to, at a minimum, have a continuance to create an incentive so they will take the neighborhood concerns into account, and I feel that's the only way they will communicate with us. I had to reach out to them. They want to come into our neighborhood. I had to reach out and call them. They already... So, at a minimum, I would like to have a continuance so we can continue that dialogue so it's an incentive to consider our... The experts in this case, those of us that live there.
Like, what other issue would you have?
Well, I think...
I mean, other than the stipulations that you guys worked... I mean, like, had multiple meetings on.
Well, I feel that this is their first venture into the United States. If you look at the three projects that they currently have, they dropped... At the first meeting, they started dropping their urban project because I kept saying, this is not downtown Phoenix. Their three projects are all in downtown, urban, core center, Scottsdale, and Phoenix, and it's the same design, it's the same project. So, I'm saying this is residential. How are you going to interface? How are you going to integrate? You're reducing the pedestrian sidewalks. This is a neighborhood. They never mentioned that they were aware of how many kids were in this... How many schools? I mean, four thousand-plus kids? This is a major bus route. I think what I'm saying is that I don't feel that they have a true understanding, nor do I feel that they care to have a true understanding because they want to have this urban project in the Biltmore Corridor of what the demographics in our neighborhood are. I personally, and I appreciate this to say this, I have a parent with advanced Alzheimer's. The neighbors came to me... I have at least ten neighbors who came to my house today, say, please speak to me. I can't be there. Seniors. This is a very multi-generational neighborhood that we chose it because we can walk to our church, we can talk to our schools. What I'd like to do is have a developer that in good faith is going to take this into account and not try to minimize it because they want to be close to the Biltmore Corridor. This is prime location. We just aren't opposed to development. We just want somebody to take our... The demographics into account, accommodate them in their design, accommodate some of the things that I mentioned. So, I feel that to do so, we need to have more time to sit down with this developer, and that's the only incentive is perhaps for a continuance because up to this point, they have not been neighborhood-friendly. Yes, they've met, but those informational meetings that you have that are city requirements are really just placards that say this is what it's going to look like. There was no meaningful exchange. It was informational only. There was no dialogue. Every time we tried to point out certain aspects, it was rebuked, but this is the demographics of our neighborhood. I'm passionate about this because I may not be representative of all the neighbors, but I've been consistently going to every single meeting, so I've seen what the developer's attitude has been frankly when we break up... Bring up those things. I mean, it's not to their benefit to consider those.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next is Stan Kunka, in favor.
Good afternoon, folks. My name is Stanley G. Kunka. I reside at twenty-five, nineteen, East Campbell Avenue. I've lived there for the past forty years. This neighbor has not been... This neighborhood is not being gentrified under our feet. I think these people are putting in a responsible development. I believe it'll add to the community, and for those reasons, I hope you grant their petition. That's all I have to say unless you have any questions.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate you coming down. All right. Against is Catherine Sprague.
Hi, my name's Catherine Sprague. I'm the Chair of the Indian School Area Neighborhood Association. I live at forty-one, thirty, North Nineteenth Street in Phoenix. Our represent... Our group represents approximately a thousand residents in about four hundred households. We represent people in Council Districts Four and Six. Our group runs from Fourteenth Street to about Twenty-Eighth Street along the Indian School Corridor. We're just to the south of this project. We're here to support the residents which will be impacted by this project and specifically those that do not want more than thirty-six units to be constructed in their area. It seems to me that thirty-six units is a great switch from the number of units currently in the area. As a Chair of a neighborhood association, I'm concerned about the message that approval of this case would send to the neighborhood associations citywide when they enter into agreements with developers. In two thousand and seven, this property was rezoned to R-four-A from its original R-three category. To protect the vulnerability of the neighborhood to the potential impact of increased density under R-four-A zoning, a stipulation was put into place to protect the neighborhood. This concern was addressed by adding the stipulation limiting the maximum number of units to thirty-six units. The Planning Commission and the City Council expressed similar concern during their approvals. This concern continues to be shared by area residents. Approval would send a message to the residents of Phoenix that the use of stipulations to protect neighborhood interests and the insurances that these stipulations represent are clearly and easily forgotten by city officials. I want to read you from the paragraph... One paragraph from the hearing officer, Teresa Hilner. She says that the previous site plan showed underground parking, and there was more open space. At this point, there is not enough usable open space with the revised plan. I believe that the neighborhood has not had time to work sufficiently with the developer when they have worked with the developer as early as last... I guess it was last night. They did not get all their questions answered. I'm not opposed to development, but I do think that if you have people that have concern that as are elected officials, you need to listen to their concerns. If the neighborhood is not quite ready for something, if more time is necessary to work with the developer, to get straight answers from the developer, to get financials as to why this is necessary economically to build up to forty-six units when previously it was only approved for thirty-six, I think that that time should be granted by their city officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. In favor, Jasper Hawkins.
Jasper Hawkins reside at fifty-three, thirty-two, North Twenty-Fourth Place. I've lived there for about forty-three years, and it's about a quarter of a mile from this site. Very saddened to hear the feeling that the people who live in the neighborhood have towards what Paul and I had done, we felt in behalf of their interests. Not from a standpoint that we cut any deals with anybody, but we tried to negotiate modifications to the plan that we had heard that the neighborhood had problems with. I investigated the two thousand and seven approval because that seemed to be what everybody was looking at, thirty-six... Only thirty-six units. When you really got into it, these are over three thousand square foot units, total subterranean Total subterranean garage, I'm thinking now, you all start thinking the dollars involved, to the point where they were proposing individual elevators from the garage up into each one of the units. Now, that's not even been done in Phoenix anywhere that I'm aware of. But the point was, that's the way they were going to market it. Well, as you all know what happened in two thousand and seven to two thousand and nine, the market collapsed. If there ever was a market for this in that location, but was, leave that aside. We felt that in discussing with the developer, he more than bent over to try to get the number of units down, which he did. He got more open space, he got on-the-ground patios. He, he really made quite a bit of concessions to what we thought was what the neighborhood was concerned with. I'm not sure now, even after I've listened, what they are concerned with, except that it is a project. Uh, one other thing to bring up. In the neighborhood, there are two projects already, they've been there a while, that are similar but far more dense than this proposal here. And apparently they were approved or were at, at least accepted by the neighborhood. This is a great improvement over those existing projects. Do you have any questions? I'll try to answer.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you. We have, uh, Daniel Schmidt, and he is getting the time from Charlene Limbecco and Andrea Yano. Mr. Schmidt, are you?
Members of the Board, my name is Daniel Schmidt. I'm an architect. I live in North Phoenix with a Cave Creek mailing address. I was current, uh, previously a resident on Glen Rose for many years in the thirties. I also lived on Camelback about Fifty-Sixth Street and lived downtown, uh, just north of Van Buren years ago. I'm very familiar with the neighborhood. I was called by, uh, concerned members of the neighborhood and attended a meeting Monday with the developer. Um, I had put together some points of, uh, discussion for the proposed multifamily development located at Twenty-Fifth and Campbell Avenue. This site was formally approved with stipulations in September two thousand and seven as aura at Camelback, which was an incredibly wonderful, um, and very professional development. I give, you know, my, uh, I'm, I'm overwhelmed with how city staff worked that out and was able to bring that type of quality development to this neighborhood, and the neighborhood really supported that. My, um, my points that I was bringing up, the first one, the neighborhood needs to know the number of bedrooms per dwelling unit. There was a refusal to give me the number of dwelling units per unit. They said they hadn't designed the units and they'd get to that later, and that they wanted to get through site plan first. I let them know that dwelling units have something to do, dwelling units, number of bedrooms, with parking requirements. Uh, they're showing a parking requirement on their site plan of point two-five per unit in addition to, uh, their restricted parking, which is the parking inside the garages. Just today, a little while ago, I went to the counter at the city, uh, building across the street and spoke with Craig Messer, who also gave me the card of Derek Van Koe. Um, he helped me imprint it this out for me, dwelling unit multifamily. Okay, uh, so, um, one point three spaces for each effi, efficiency unit. One and a half spaces per one or two-bedroom unit and two spaces per three or more-bedroom unit. Now, that is based on, just for the residents themselves. And they say one space for a unit of less than six hundred square feet. The developer did share that the units were over sixteen hundred square feet livable. Uh, my experience with the Phoenix housing market in luxury condos, twelve hundred square feet is as large as two bedrooms really get. Uh, you're looking at, they might call it a den, they might call it an office, they might call it a flex room. These are gonna be three-bedroom units. And, uh, they say that when, uh, the required parking is reserved for residents, additional unreserved parking is required as follows. Point three spaces for each efficiency unit. Point five spaces for each one or two-bedroom unit and one space for each three or more-bedroom unit. This is section seven oh-two-point-C off-street parking and loading. So all of this parking would have to be accommodated on-site. They didn't want to discuss this. They want forty-four units. They want to provide point two-five spaces per unit. They brought out a new site plan with plants shown. These trees were making it impossible to park in the parking spaces they were already counted. They had less available parking spaces as landscaped than the point two-five they originally agreed to. To be a good neighbor, they need one on-site guest parking space per unit. That's what seven oh-two-point-C says right here. There are many other issues in which, uh, I'd say, some of which they seemed, if they were very small and minor, to actually pay attention to. Uh, one of these was, uh, there should be an adequate space for a full-size vehicle to back out of the end garage spaces and in one move go forward to exit the complex. This movement should in no way impede or endanger anyone walking on the sidewalk or path behind the backing vehicle. As currently designed, when the car pulls out of that end space, in order to pull forward, their back end is gonna be on to the sidewalk, the pedestrian sidewalk, to get to the dwelling units. That's dangerous. I don't know how you do that and say that's good. Uh, there should be a sanitary dog-dropping station in area on-site, which is adequate for the final total number of units in the development. This shouldn't be pushed to the neighborhood. They should deal with this on-site. There should be an outside social area where people can meet and sit and children can play. This space should obviously not be inside the pool enclosure. There is no social space whatsoever outside of the pool enclosure. This is an incredibly intensive automotive use. There is, you've got garage facing garage and an absolute bare minimum of space between these two garage doors. It is to, the, uh, pedestrian traffic is sent around the property. It's not through the property. And on the front, their units are being serviced from the sidewalk off of Campbell Avenue. This is, they're designing a four-foot sidewalk. They had a fourteen-foot sidewalk. And if I can read this to you, they switched to a four-foot sidewalk. Here's how they announced it. Building setbacks from back of sidewalk slash curb to the face of the building on Twenty-Fifth Street and, or, on Twenty-Fifth Street and twenty-four feet four from the back of sidewalk to face a building on Campbell Avenue. The back of curb is not the property line. That, property line is now seven feet from the patio walls for individual, the private patios for individual units. I foresee it needed, the future for Phoenix to do a bus turnout lane somewhere in that general vicinity, and that would be an ideal location.
We're gonna have to ask you to wrap it up. You would?
Well, I am, I would like a continuance.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right, we do have, uh, other cards, people not wishing to speak who are in favor. It looks like J O T T U Costaras, K O S T A R A S, David Sederberg, Jay Barnes, Ken Johnson, Dusko J O V I C I C, Chadwick Gifford, and, uh, Roger Theis. It looks like T H E I S, what I can read. Okay, that's all the cards we have. Anybody else here wishes to speak or any council members have a comment? Councilman DeCecio.
If I could, uh, one of the issues that did come up was parking. Um, and one of the things that did come out of the meetings was to get a ruling from the city staff on the parking. Could you address this, Alan?
Certainly. City Vice Mayor, Councilman DeCecio. The applicant on their revised site plan, uh, has forty-six units and they do meet all of the required parking. Uh, so on both plans, they met the required parking. Uh, the latest one, they, they meet it as well. All those other items that the gentleman just, uh, read into the record are part of the ordinance that the applicant will be required to meet, so they will have to have maneuvering areas for trash collection pickup. They'll have to have, uh, the guest parking and meet all those requirements. Staff will ensure that's done, um, when they go through the rest of the development process.
And those are already part of the code that they have to do that anyways?
That's correct.
Uh, I'm ready to make a motion, Mayor. Um, I...
Uh, wait, we have to close out the...
Oh, the public hearing. Oh, that's right.
And I appreciate the promotion. Thank you. All right. Uh, so we're gonna close out the public hearing, and now we will entertain motions.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna put a motion on the table here. At the end of the day, I think a lot of people tried to work really hard. And if it's individuals from your neighborhood or not from your neighborhood, you still should like the fact that others tried to help out, at least put together some, I think, pretty significant stipulations in place. And then we added more in the last few days too because of the last few meetings that have occurred there. If it comes down to, we just don't like the project, it's not gonna happen, we don't like the fact that they're doing it, I understand that. Uh, we were told that there were s, some specific things that needed to be accomplished. I believe every specific stipulation was accomplished here. One of the things to look at too, I don't know if I would consider that a criticism, but just because they're from out of state or from out of the country and they were building in downtown Scottsdale or downtown Phoenix, doesn't mean that they're gonna, you know... To some level, I think that's, uh, a statement saying that they like the neighborhood too and they equiv, and, and it's equivalent to those other areas too. I mean, I consider downtown Phoenix, downtown Scottsdale to be nice areas. And the fact that the project's coming in, I think they've done an outstanding job of putting together, I think, an incredible project for that neighborhood. Uh, when you're talking about infill development, you want to encourage a level of diversity. This brings in diversity into a neighborhood. You know, the concerns over the children walking around, I think those are legitimate concerns, but at the same time, you want to encourage people to have own, homeownership in a community. And, you know, being able to live in a pla, in a, in a place along Campbell, I think is fantastic. I think it's been an area that we've been trying to encourage people to come into and look at, and I'm just very glad that they're there. So I'm gonna add, um, more stipulations to what was already approved, uh, from the, the meetings that were discussed. And I believe that they've addressed all the concerns except for the fact that they just may not like the development. And that's something you just can't fix. You know, either you like it or you don't, and if you do like it, you know, here are the things you need to do to fix it, and I believe that they've gone out of their way to do that. So I'm gonna move to approve the Planning Commission recommendation, adopt the related ordinance with the following modification, stipulation one, to address recent resident concerns. The development shall be in the general conformance to the site plan and elevations dated stamped September ten, two thousand and fourteen, as approved and modified by the Planning and Development Department with specific regard to A, minimum two-inch caliper trees in the landscape area along the entry-drive and guest parking area. B, a sidewalk and minimum two-inch caliper trees placed twenty feet on center or in equivalent groupings along the western boundary of the site. C, the block wall on the southern and western boundaries of the site shall be maintained. D, the site visibility triangle at the intersection of Twenty-Fifth and, Street and Campbell Avenue shall be maintained. E, each private yard along Campbell Avenue shall be enclosed by a minimum three-foot wall. And F, each unit shall have a two-car garage. And, and to follow with Mr. Hawkins too, you know, there's gonna be a considerable amount of open space, ground-level patios. Uh, the dwelling units meet all the parking requirements. I think people, uh, they, they've done, for a small project like this, they've done more than even some of the larger developers that we've seen come through here. So I want to give them credit for trying to make it work. Uh, sometimes it does and sometimes it doesn't, and in this case here, they've tried really hard to make it work with the neighbors. That's my motion, Mayor. Vice Mayor.
Anybody else have comments? Second? Any further, yeah, uh, Councilman Noakowski and then Councilman Gallego.
One of the concerns I heard out there was, um, community outreach. Alan, how many meetings were there and how were they posted?
Uh, Vice Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, there were approximately thirteen meetings with, uh, various neighbors. Uh, over the last several months, the application was originally filed in July. Uh, they had their first meeting late in July, um, and then had some subsequent meetings. Some were individual, one-on-one meetings, but other ones were group meetings. The required notice, uh, requirements for a planning hearing officer, uh, requests such as this are that all neighborhood associations registered with the city within six hundred feet get notification as well as, uh, any property owners that, uh, live within the area within three hundred feet and anyone who spoke at the original zoning case. So those folks were all notified as part of the hearing process. In addition, there's a sign, uh, that's placed by, uh, staff out front of, uh, the parcel site.
I just wanted clarification about what the original sidewalk plan was. The last speaker alluded to fourteen feet, which seems, I'm not sure if I heard that right, and so what was it originally and what would it be if Councilman DeCecio's mo, motion goes forward?
Vice Mayor and, uh, Councilman Gallego, their proposed, uh, sidewalk plan would meet the ordinance requirements, which is five feet, uh, as part of this project. They may have been proposing a larger size before, but I don't know what that size was.
Okay, but it was never fourteen-foot?
Uh, it, it may have been a fourteen-foot sidewalk originally. I don't have the original plans in front of me, you know, how wide that sidewalk was.
Thank you.
Uh, my motion dealt with more along the trees. Um, we actually stipulated to the size of the trees so that they can't be any smaller than that, uh, in the neighborhood too. Fourteen-foot would be a huge sidewalk. No, 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 I know, no, I know.
I'm not in favor of fourteen-foot.
No, 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 I wouldn't either. I heard the same thing, but it's not what they're gonna be doing. They're gonna be doing co, according to code.
All right. Very good. All right, any other? Yes, Councilman Pastor.
Alan, in notifying the neighbors, were all the schools notified also regarding the project?
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, sorry, Vice Mayor and Councilwoman Pastor, uh, we do not have a notice requirement for schools as part of a PHO application. We do require notice as part of the original rezoning request. So, uh, at that time, the, the property was, uh, school districts were noticed about additional, uh, students that would come in the area, and we require applicants to provide notice about the maximum potential number of units, um, which is far greater than the, the forty-six that they're proposing here. I would note for the record that, uh, this is an increase of ten dwelling units compared to the two thousand and seven approval, but it's a reduction in building height of eight feet. So the original approval, even though it had less units, was forty-eight feet in building height. The current one is forty feet.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? Do you think we've got the motion? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes, sorry.
Gallego. Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams. Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
All right, item passes nine to nothing. Uh, next item is number sixty. Uh, I'm told we don't have to have a staff presentation?
Hey, do we have any cards on this item?
We have a card, but I believe Pat Ben, I don't see him, I believe he's left.
Okay.
That was the only card.
Then I would move to approve for the NHD Subcommittee Recommendation and accept the related ordinance.
Second.
Thank you. Anybody have anything to say about this one? Oh. Okay, so I'm sorry, we're gonna hold a public hearing about this. Opening the public hearing, anybody have anything to say about number sixty? Saying none, we're closing the public hearing. Councilman Williams, I apologize. Would you please redo the motion?
I, I, yes, Vice Mayor, uh, I move to approve for the Planning Commission Recommendation and adopt the related ordinance.
It was even better the second time.
How about I do it the right way? Motion to approve for the NHD Subcommittee Recommendation and adopt the related ordinance. I, I was, I'm trying to see if they were paying attention.
All right. So thank you. Uh, any further discussion? Second?
Second.
Second? Further discussion? None? Roll call. Roll call.
Can you repeat that motion?
Oh.
I could, but, you know, lost experience of being Vice Mayor.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
Motion passes nine to nothing. That is the end of our regularly scheduled session.